Who's going to pray tonight? Troy, you'd like to? I'm sorry? Okay.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, it's another time we bow before you, God. And one, we just want to give you thanks, God, for allowing us to be here. And thank you for the health and all that you do for us, God. And we just ask, God, that you would allow us to come together to make good decisions for this community, to be all about you, God. It's everything we do is for you and all about you. And we just ask that you would guide our thoughts and just be with us in this evening. And we ask these in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to pledge allegiance to America and President of Texas.
I plead allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We're going Texas.
Honored Texas father, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
We're going to... Mayor comments. I'm glad everybody showed up tonight. Appreciate yours. Thank you, guys, for showing up. That's all I can say for you. Thank you. Public works? I mean, public report?
Yeah, our public comments.
Item. Just general. We're going to put it over to the attorney right now.
Well, on the public comments, you have some yellow cards that we...
Okay, I got you. I'm sorry. First one, Debbie Bells.
Good evening, everyone. Debbie Bells, 2900 County Road 805B. I would like to thank all the staff, volunteers, and vendors for the Christmas market this year. Quite enjoyable event, and for all of us to attend, it was wonderful. I, for one, am looking forward to this happening again in our city next year. Now, this is addressed to Mrs. Parrish, who is not here tonight, and it's regarding the exit of the city secretary, Tabitha Mansell. Her exit interview was quite surprising. This was not a positive rating for our city and definitely not towards the mayor. Under the section Supervisory Conditions, it can be marked as Excellent, Good, Fair, and Poor. One of the questions demonstrated fair and equal. She marked as poor due to the mayor's biased treatment. Another question, Performance Evaluation, Tabitha rated as poor, stating the mayor was manipulative and biased. Another section stated welcomed suggestions. Poor, if it wasn't the mayor's idea, then it wasn't welcome. She did state she had excellent communication between other departments in the city. She also had excellent quality and quantity of benefits. Question on her exit letter, what made you consider leaving employment with the city? Her answer, persistent escalating hostile work environment caused by the mayor. Another question, would you recommend others to work at the city of Keene? Her response, no. I've also obtained a letter that Tabitha submitted in her exit interview. She states that her choice to resign was solely influenced by the intolerable circumstances of enduring constant disrespect, unjust scrutiny, and moral turpitude due to the conflicts within the organization stemming from the mayor herself. In this exit interview, it is documented that the mayor sent approximately 297 emails to Tabitha during her eight months of being employed. On October 4, she requested a log of all communications that supposedly took place between Tabitha and Mr. Bells on September 29. Mrs. Parrish requested to know whether it was in person, via phone call, text, or email. Then she wanted this forwarded to her in a transcript, text, or email. On the same day, Mrs. Parrish was informed that an open records request was needed for dates July 3 to present between her and Mr. Roberts, herself and Councilman Gutwah, and herself and Susan Gutwah, for text messages, emails, recorded messages, and communications. Her response to Tabitha was she did not have anything responsive. She did not transcribe anything for her with conversations, but yet Mrs. Parrish wanted to remember... She wanted Tabitha to remember what was said, if anything, about a council member. Not everything discussed between council members and the city staff has to be transcribed for her review. Lisa is supposed to be the mayor of this city, not the employer of the council, to which they should not have to answer. Council answers to the citizens of Keene. For this to continue, this harassment, and push these employees to the point where they have to quit, is unacceptable. Now Nathan is gone. Each employee of this city is a valuable asset and needs to be treated as such. Thank you.
Samantha Gillen, please.
The council, Mayor Protem, sent Samantha Gillen to 18 West Fourth Street. First, let me say I have some concerns because our mayor is insinuating that she... her life is threatened, or she's being threatened with harm, bodily harm, by our council members. It's insinuated in the posts that she puts on Facebook and everything. And I have a problem with that because there are other members of this citizenship here in Keene that have been threatened, stalked, all kinds of things, due to comments she's made on Facebook, and she's had people make on Facebook. And I, for one, had a post put on there that I was giving away $25 gift cards at my home to people who would come there on Halloween night, which put me in harm's way. Plus, someone could have wanted to rob me, thinking I had a whole parcel full of $25 gift cards. And so that was very frightening, and I don't like it. I've had someone ring my front doorbell, ring the back doorbell over a seven-foot fence that's locked all the time. And so I don't think, unless she's got actual threats against her, that that's happening. I think it's to draw attention to it. She's asking prayers for it. I say pray for everybody in Keene that nobody's having to go through that kind of thing, not just the mayor. It's an attention-getting thing, and I really, really prefer to think that our chief and our police officers are doing a really good job. But do we have to pay them to guard her when everybody else is getting threats too, or other people are getting threats? This anonymous posting on there with these horrible situations in Facebook should just be gone. I mean, it just should be gone. And so I just wanted to make a point that, you know, security is security, but I don't feel like the taxpayers need to pay for security for her unless she can prove that one of our council people or someone has actually threatened her. I'm not going to have the police come and guard me. Okay, so, anyway.
I got you. Well, thank you, Ms. Gillen.
Thank you.
Paul, please.
Mayor Protem Johnson and council, thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to take you back to December 7 and the parade, my last appearance here, when in watching it, I noticed that from the 7:48, 7 minute 48 second mark to the 9 minute 03 mark, I had no sound. So for a minute and 15 seconds, which was the most important minute and 15 seconds in my presentation, no one except the council heard what I was saying. So especially those on Facebook. So what I was doing here at that time was acknowledging the work of the 66 individuals who served behind the scenes putting on our Christmas light parade. Now, certainly 21 of those were firefighters and Keene police and Keene ISD police. They're very visible. But the other 45, you know, we had an estimated 4,300 spectators along Old Betsy Road and uphill crest, Mockingbird and Fourth Street. They had no idea about the other 45 people behind the scenes. Our registration people, our judges, the starters, even the technicians for the fireworks who arrive at 1 o'clock and spend five hours loading all the mortars, although it's computer programmed, still, all those mortars had to be loaded. There was 45 people, in addition to police, fire, who worked behind the scenes for that parade. And so I wanted to acknowledge their efforts. You have them there listed on the short truce piece of paper, and those in bold are all volunteers. So those are the people who should be acknowledged and praised for the parade. They did an outstanding job. Thank you.
We just want to tell you and everybody else we appreciate it, Paul. Thank you very much. You did a good job, all of you.
Thank you.
Evening, council, staff. Appreciate you guys being here. I have two things that I would like to talk about. One is something in the charter. When I was running for city council, I made a point to making sure that I was... even though I didn't win, I still wanted to make a statement by continuing to do what I set forth to do, even though I'm not in that chair. So this is one of those things that I'd like to talk about. So, one, I have been going through the charter, even though a week ago, we just talked about in city council, maybe getting into the amendment process. So I wanted to bring something up that I thought was very important. Section 3.02, it states, each member of the council and mayor shall receive compensation for your services. $10 for city council members and $50 for the mayor. $50 a month for the mayor and $10 per meeting. And frankly, I don't think that's good enough anymore. And the reason why is because back in 2014, when they amended certain things in the charter, they didn't look at that. And so the last amendment that was done in '14, that was overlooked. And maybe that was still good back then, but inflation has hit. And it takes time to come here. It takes time out of your guys' day to be here, and there has to be a little bit of appreciation for that. So, and what's that worth? I don't know. I mean, we can all guess. I'd like to see it actually doubled, just because, I mean, even $20 a month seems a little bit embarrassing, but I feel like that is... that's the right... it's a good step in the right direction to show some appreciation for what you guys have to be here to do. And it's not just here. I understand that most of you are looking at your packets days in advance, and you're taking the time and you're taking the diligence to do what's best for us as citizens. So it's only fair that we try to compensate you a little bit better than what is on this piece of paper. So that was my first statement. So hopefully, when the amendment process happens, that we can look at that and hopefully change that. The extra caveat to that is I would actually like to see that actually taken out of the charter, because if inflation or things turn bad, I'd like to have that as an ordinance instead. So then that way, it can be changed on a moment's notice in case things get radically bad, because every time it has to go through a vote through a charter, then that would just take much more time. So that's my first point. My second point was in regards to social media, and I want to expound on something that somebody... that a few people have mentioned on social media. Social media can be used for good, but the problem is, is sometimes people read a comment and they instantly take it in a negative light, okay? But I want to focus on a different part of that. In this community, the community as a whole, as religious as we are, we find comfort in that. And so what does that mean, right? So somebody will read something and then post a scripture to kind of combat that. And so hear me out when I'm talking about this. So, and the reason why they're doing that is because they're trying to bring the good part about what we should be doing as a community. And so as I'm talking about this, I'm talking to the council members here tonight because there's been some tragedies going on in our city. I mean, in the two years that I've... three years that I've been here, I have seen... Let me cut my mic off. There we go. I have... It has been happening that we draw a line and that we make a stand for it tonight. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Jen, you'd like to speak, please?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Jen Baggett, 200 Pine Street, Keene, Texas. And first, let me start out by quoting our mayor. She says, Jen, doesn't have it in her mind to give 110% to anything? Here you go. And I will let you guys look at all of this later. She also, and I'm quoting her, says that we... I... Many of us that are going through stuff need to stand up for ourselves and each other against hate, bullying, and violence. I agree. It needs to start with her. Let me get my other paper real quick. Last meeting, I was removed illegally. She fixated on me the entire meeting, almost creepily like the camera up there. He is severely hard of hearing. Ray knows that. It's down to one hearing, Nate. And the only way, we've been together six and a half years, that we can communicate without putting our hands in sign language and whatnot, is to whisper like this. She has stated wrongfully that that's not allowed. We were not disruptive. I have read through the official, and I will pass this out front and back, and nowhere on it does it state what she said to me that meeting and previous meetings. I have every right to communicate with him. Either that, or she, or the city can start providing immediately parade services for him to hear. We were trying... That's why we sat up here, so that he could hear. Then we sat back there because that wasn't good enough for mayor. If it wasn't one thing, she targeted and harassed us for another. This is our way of communicating. A little bit of sign, but mostly just doing this. We stream many, many, many videos for free for Keene. We love the city. We love most of the people here. And Mr. Bell, your voice is the easiest for him to hear. Thank you. But she spoke of rules of decorum on 9/27/23. Does that apply to her as well? When I helped Mr. Paul Knott hand out papers one meeting, he had asked me, she yelled at me not once, but twice to sit down. Not, what am I doing, Ms. Baggett? No, rudely twice to sit down. Not once did she apologize when it was explained to her. Thank you, Mr. Foster and Lynn. What I was doing for Mr. Knott. And as you'll see right here, also on 9/27/23, Ms. Coppiata yelled down from back there without being called on, yeah, get back. She didn't get yelled at. She stood up there the whole time. Mr. Smith spoke. Did she say anything to her? It's all on that footage of his. Why does she... because she's pro-mayor, get to not be picked on? Many examples of that. She removed me after the CAD people left that last meeting. After she nonchalantly takes out her phone, snaps two to three pictures of us, which I'm still waiting on those to receive from the city, then she says, I have to leave. I asked... I said, no. I said, why? And she points to Mr. Kidd, and of course, I respect him and the law, and I obliged. But like I said, I've read through this whole packet. I didn't violate any rules. I'm not embarrassed by my conduct, but I'm embarrassed by hers. She owes myself and this city an apology for continuing this drama. And then you'll see right here on that post she made the other day on Facebook about pointing out Mr. Easley, serial killer, blah, blah, blah. Here you will see just that handful of instances of where she's either been a dissigator or allowed bullying, harassment, smearing, and hate on her and Gutwah's page. In fact, there's a couple of incidents where she said, leave it up there, Susan. I explained to her implicitly everything, how this is just... Would you like it for yours? And leave it up there. I'll put it in my file. But it's funny, she can't face the music tonight of what she has done? Those are just some of the examples. And she also came up here and lied about being heavily involved in the recall? Here's just a short list of examples of... I give you my word unto God, she definitely was it. She schooled me, she taught me, she told me everything to do. Multiple times had me go to her daycare and pick up papers. No way in heck could I do that on my own. Why would I want to? And here's just more instances of Lisa. Susan blocked him, I'm going to kill him. And don't start with this whole private conversation stuff, because she never said not that it was private, nor did she say not to share it. And plus, I know for a fact she's done the same. And I know for a fact she's used other aliases, too. And you will see on there where she references a Down syndrome kid to him two to three times, makes fun of me, calls me a tweaker because I guess I'm too thin, makes fun of my hair. Yeah, Krylon's on special at Home Depot. Buy one, get one free. Hey. I don't care about that. It's the bullying, the smearing, and the hate towards us and others, many others in this city that needs to stop. And she cannot point the finger at poor me victim thing when she's guilty of it tenfold. I remember Ms. Romanova early on telling me about how hard it is to prove slander, because I was citing many examples, and she said, then you'll look in one of those papers where she said, oh, I have a special needs son. I'm not going to with you. And then she uses her husband to say, if he wasn't disabled... Steven wasn't disabled, she would have him come kick his ass and or come have a talk with him. Her... Lisa's group expert, she allowed that. Are you guys trying to tell me that's not bullying? Calling him disabled, calling him Down syndrome, allowing the group expert to say that. We... You know where we live. I've told you more than once, I will not talk about children, allow others to talk about children. I'm here all the time. Talk to me like an adult. Keyboard warriors are not my thing. I believe if you're adult enough to say it online, you're adult enough to face it to my face. And I've not been an angel either, but by golly, enough is enough. None of this... If it's back at you, if you smear him or me, myself, or my good friends, which has been happening, I have the right to stand up for myself, as does any other. But that last meeting, getting removed, as she did, and that footage, allowing her people to get in there and spice and dice it up, now that I've viewed a lot of it, it sickens me, how she talks to her council, except for him. I don't know how you guys do it, but kudos to you guys. I respect and appreciate each one of you, but this needs to stop for Keene's betterment and all of the citizens' betterment. I'm not asking for perfection, but I'm asking for this antagonizing, the bullying, the smearing, the slander, the harassment, the poor me, poor victim stuff. Common denominator is always her. And the only one that needs security now is myself, him, and some good friends of mine. And I can say that with a clear conscience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve? You good? Okay. Come on, Ms. Gillen.
I needed some clarification, and I was meant to ask it while ago. And you don't have to respond. I just want to ask the question. At the last meeting, when I asked, because I was getting open records, and I asked, where is the money going? And I was told at that meeting that it was going to the city. Well, you charging $164 or whatever for the videos and stuff like that, that you were doing for free, and that you said in the Facebook that you were giving them to people for free, that you never charged for them. Well, evidently, you are. And I still don't have my last group that I asked for, which is going to cost me 100 and something dollars. I don't know if you're part of that or not, but I specifically asked that night, do the people who bring this, who are being requested to get these documents in here for an Open Records Act, where the money was going? And it was going to the city. And I don't mind paying the city for their time and their work and the hours they have to spend doing this, but I do not want to pay you to bring something that you've told everybody you were going to do for free. That's lying. And I still say, you never came to my business, and you kept calling me a liar and telling me you did. And you didn't, because we keep records of it and everything else. I don't know where you went, but it wasn't my office, Mr. Gutwah. Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you. Okay, we got reports, public hearing items, percentage agenda, and general, we are skipping that tonight. We're just going to turn it over to the attorney.
Counsel, if we would, on item 7A, we'll start with that. I'll discuss kind of parliamentary procedures and other... Can anybody hear me? Make sure I got it in front of me here. Make sure I got it in front of me. Basically, talk about some of the open meetings issues that we've been experiencing the last few meetings. I kind of wanted to make sure everybody on council understood in the future kind of what... how these meetings are supposed to be run on these issues. In particular, y'all understand, we're governed by the Texas Open Meetings Act. What that means is, is that everything we discuss will be discussed in public, except for certain matters that may be discussed in closed executive session. And that's what I wanted to point out was misconstrued at the last meeting. For example, under the personnel exception, if you're having personnel matters, the council may discuss them in executive session. They're not obligated to have them in executive session. And the person being discussed can't demand they be in executive session. The only demand that could be had is, is that if you have it in executive closed session, the person being discussed may request it be in open session. So that was presented, I think, to y'all last time as the backwards to that. And so just remember that. Essentially, you can discuss anything you want in open session. Some things certainly make sense to have them in executive session. For example, you're trying to buy a piece of property, and you're negotiating with a third party. That's the real property deliberations. You wouldn't want to get in here and say, yeah, we offer him up to... Because you know that's the price you're paying if you did that. So that's why you're allowed to go in executive session, and when it would be a detriment in your negotiations, you go into executive. Well, same for personnel. Personnel, you don't have to go into it, but typically, you do on certain personnel matters. But again, you're not obligated to. And so in particular, if you recall, there were some criticisms being levied at the mayor. But if they're at any of y'all, none of us like criticism. None of us do. The reality is, the Texas Open Meetings Act says that a city council cannot silence public criticism against them. It's hard to take, but unfortunately, that's the law. So in essence, we have to be mindful of that. If it's about... If it's about your performance, or about city performance, I don't care what the criticism is, you have to sit here and listen to it. It's not pleasant, but that's the reality. Secondly, an issue came up about a discussion of information regarding personnel matter had been subject to a Texas Open Meetings, Texas Public Information Act request. It was out in the public. Once that information's in the public, which Ms. Bell's read today, that is open information. It is not confidential information. In fact, what the process we take as a city is, anytime we have, if there's an open records request for information regarding you, Ms. Gutwah or any of our, we notify you and tell you, "Hey, guys, we've got an open records request regarding you, give you a copy of that." So that way, you have the ability to assert whether you want it confidential or not. So, that's the person or the employee's responsibility. We don't go ahead, now, we redact certain social security numbers and things, we're allowed to redact, but the point is, is that once it's an open, given out to the public under a Public Information Act request, it is no longer a confidential issue that we can protect at that point. So, just those two things were, I know, kind of sticking points at the last meeting, and we want to make sure the council understands those two issues, specifically regarding personnel type issues. Anybody have any questions on those issues? None? Okay.
I appreciate you.
And the only other issue I would have is, is that public comment, and I'm very mindful of the issue we had last meeting, where somebody was removed from the meeting. I think what y'all said today, and I heard it, the hate's got to stop. I really wish we could all try to focus on city business alone, let bygones be bygones. I think that will help your community more in the long run than winning some argument on Facebook, or even in a council meeting. When I heard this gentleman get up and applaud the city, that's what we love to hear. At the end of the day, we all know there's legitimate criticisms for every government body. Nobody's perfect. Everybody up here that's serving, you see what they're principally some, they get paid to serve, and put themselves out here every day. At the end of the day, all of us, let's take an opportunity to try to be more positive in our public comments about everybody. Every sitting person up here, every staff person that serves, give them respect. That's what I've told all these folks, I've tell the same thing to our staff, that's what I tell myself. Everybody deserves to be treated with respect. I think your city needs that. I think they need to remember that. You've got a lot of good things going in this community, don't mess it up. Your public comments when you speak, and remember this, is that you are held to a public decorum standard. It doesn't mean we can keep you from criticizing us, but at the end of the day, try to make it constructive, don't attack the person, look at the issues of what they're performing, their job performance. Let's don't get down and, and talk about people and what they're experiencing. Not saying y'all are, I'm just saying, in general, Facebook tends to raise its ugly head so much, and you have people saying things that I don't think they'd ever say to each other, to their face. So remind, remember that when all these people up here, including the mayor, are serving to the best of their capacity, try to give them that respect. Any other questions, counsel? I'd love to answer. I could spend days on the Open Meetings Act, and I know it's one of the things that...
I have a question.
Absolutely.
It doesn't matter who it is, I think counsel, period, mayor, none of us up here should be on Facebook, period, talking about the city, talking about people. That's the problem we have in here. We got people on Facebook just talking smack about everybody, it's like you said. In person, they wouldn't do it, but we do, and I understand why these people upset here. But we shouldn't be on Facebook. I don't, I don't know if we can make a rule.
No, it's a First Amendment right to be on Facebook and comment. Employees have that right. We can certainly limit it somewhat on employees, but elected officials have a certain, you're, you're the bosses, the leaders of this city. So, yes, sir, unfortunately, that's, that's the First Amendment right you have.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
What would constitute enough of a disturbance to warrant being removed from a proceeding?
I'd say it'd be a lot. I think it's, in general, if you look at the disorderly conduct, which is a crime, it's basically intentional behavior that was preventing a meeting from going forward. So, for example, and the one thing I don't know, Ms. Baggett mentioned about decorum rules, I haven't seen any decorum rules that we've adopted. I don't know if we have. I would encourage us to look at adopting city council procedural rules. It's something that, yes, ma'am? Oh.
Just like you would like to ask a question.
Sure, let me finish this, and come on up, and, and, but basically, the, the rules basically talk about, you know, kind of, of how we run the meetings, the type of procedural rules. We did it for just setting the agenda, and that was a monumental undertaking to get that. But let's face it, getting rules in place and expectations to the citizens. But one of the things that, if you intentionally try to hold up a meeting, one case where literally the citizen took a bunch of paper, had shredded it all up and threw it in the middle of the council chambers, and wouldn't leave the spot. They escorted him out. They upheld that on appeal, when that person sued the city. So, what really, I think, if y'all are up here, and, you know, all of us have certain sensitivities, but in general, the reality is, is that people out there are going to be doing certain things, talking amongst themselves, they may be doing it very quietly. You just can't fixate on it, you can't focus on it. But if it's bothering y'all as a whole up here, that's when you look over to the mayor and you say, "I want that stopped." And then you take action to do that. The appropriate, in my opinion, would be to speak with the city manager, and then see if he can get the people lined up. If not, then you have your security, the police chief, whoever is here, take action to remove someone. But I think you always, you know, the one thing I would, Ms. Baggett, I apologize for you being removed, because it is not a pleasant thing. I've been doing this for 25 years, this is my 26th year. I've never sat in a meeting where somebody was removed.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Judge, if you'd like.
Come on up here, please, Jen.
I normally...
Give me a name.
I let her previous attacks on us go. Like I said, we were here streaming on Facebook before YouTube, and she would, and him, fixate on us. She would have him video, go take it home, cut it out, post it, and add in, add in crinkly bottle noises that weren't me. I own my, that's, it's, it's not, it's not simply let it go. Like I said, we support, we volunteer in our great city. My kid, my last youngest, is about to graduate this year. I love this town, I love the schools, spent many years here, shop a lot here, but this targeting, no matter where we sit, what we do, what next? I can't dress this way, the sparkles are too... Enough is enough. What do I need to do to file for her to stop harassing me and Stephen? Because it's not just on Facebook with her moniker, it's other monikers that she's using at well, as well. And no, I'm not making this up. This is factual. It's, it's against myself, my fiance, and my family. No person in their right mind can continue to let it go. Because I just want to come in here and just enjoy a meeting. It didn't even matter that we sat way back there. The furthest back we could go, she was, it was awful. Everybody's like, "She's fixating on you, she's fixating on you." I know, and it made me uncomfortable. There's no reason mayor needs to fixate on one, two human beings this whole meeting. This is her couns-, this is the council, and y'all have your packets. That's what needs to be the focus, not Jen Baggett. And like I said, I've got a, I could sit down with you and talk for hours, and it's not hearsay. I'm talking facts, reality, stuff that the public doesn't even know. But I'm refraining out of respect, and hope that the city can better itself, but I'm tired of her targeting myself and Stephen. Because she's the only one, like I said, that last meeting where she talked about papers, there was literally Mr. Arigato sitting right there doing the same thing. She looked the other way. And I don't care, he's a great guy, but she targets us. And then, I know her and Lisa and a couple other of her close people also said, shaking the head isn't allowed. Is that against the law, sir? Like I said, it's petty, and it needs to stop. Please.
Like I said, I apologize for what happened, but at the end of the day, I wasn't here, don't know exactly what happened, but at the end of the day, one of the things, going back to Mr. Foster's question, we ought to look at adopting rules that would set procedures for when our police chief will be involved, and so the council itself could then take action in a meeting and say, "It's, we decide it's time, this person needs to get out, they've disrupted or not."
Is that supplemental to Roberts' Rules of Order?
Yes. Yeah, Roberts' Rules of Order are more of just a motion form and when to do business. This is more of the procedures that you would follow in a meeting, proper, you know, speaking properly to the council, recognizing Roberts' orders. It's basically that type of protocol. I've got several forms, I know that we could look at and adapt to fit us, but mainly, I think this is a perfect example of when you get caught, when you don't have a procedure of who gets somebody, who kicks somebody out of a meeting, you know? And that's, again, it's a serious thing, and y'all ought to be involved, or at least have a say in it. Everybody ought to have a say in it, who's on this council. And so, that's what I'm getting at, is, is that maybe have some procedures in place. I think it will behoove you to have more structure in a meeting. Again, it's, so it also allows us to utilize our staff more efficiently.
Don Beeson, 607 Woodlawn and Keane, I have a question, just for the attorney, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And then I'll sit back down, listen to you answer. And let's just call it the open records law, which you were referring to a while ago. It says, it indicates in there that there could be a criminal penalty attached if procedures aren't followed, if things are not turned over. If someone does not turn over the records that are requested, and you know they exist, whose responsibility is it to file a criminal complaint, and in what jurisdiction, what court does it be, is it filed at? Okay? I think several are interested in that.
Well, that, that is the next item.
Oh, sorry.
So we were, sorry about that.
I didn't read the agenda, really.
But I, but I will jump to that in a minute. Let's, let's close out the open meetings portion. And any other questions about open meetings?
This is about public in, in information.
Sure, oh, no, the public, that's the next item. If we want to move to that, we can.
I, I just have a comment.
Come up here, Wes, please.
No big deal. West Shram, 1002 West Forest Street. Could we just put Mr. Johnson's name in front of him, instead of Lisa Parrish's name in front of him? Would that work?
What they trying to do, ma'am, tip me as a woman? I'm gonna have to get these guys. Thank you, Don, I appreciate you making me look bad.
This is about the request for public information?
Sure.
Okay.
Paul Knott, 26 years inside the Keane City limits, in the last 23 at 107 North Old Mansfield Road. Okay, I have 20 years in the newspaper business, was editor of Keane's only newspaper for that time, and in those days, public information was hard copy. The public information request, the recipient received hard copy. Now, there's video, I understand, or it's digital copies. Okay. So let's just say that Mr. Bell's and Mr. Foster and Mr. Johnson, Mr. Gutwah have cameras and are videoing me right here, and also, so is the city. So I want an open records request for what I said here. How do I do that? And who supplies the, who answers my, my request? Whose video do I get? And if there's no security screen on it, how do I know that it's not been edited, it's not been, something has been altered? Who do I trust? How do I know?
A lot of those questions I can't answer, but I can answer you this, is that any information held on private devices by a city council member is subject to the Public Information Act if it's related to city business. And so, that's what the law has been evolving the last decade. The law's been evolving in the last decade, where it used to be, if it was on your private phone, you didn't have to turn it over. A number of AG opinions now have held that if it's related to city business, you have to turn it over. The burden is on the city, as we have a records custodian, typically, it's a city secretary, and that city secretary has an obligation under the law to obtain the information that's held on private devices. She has no ability, or he, have no ability to subpoena or get that information. So, if there's a request asked for, for example, for Mr. Gutwah's videos, then we notify Mr. Gutwah and request him to give us that information, so we can produce it to the requester.
I was in court one time, covering a court case, and I had my phone there, and Judge John Neal called me to the bench, and he said, "Are, are, are you recording this?" And I said, "Yes, I need to go make sure I have everything accurate." He said, "You can't do that." He said, "I'm asking you not to do that. There can be only one, only one, and no matter if Mr. Foster hears something different, if Mr. Gutwah hears something different, it is the one that is the final, and that's the one." And that, in that case, in that court, it was a court stenographer. That was the law, what the court stenographer said. And I just think we need to move to that. We can't have, and of course, these people aren't, in my example, everybody has a camera here, only two, there's only two cameras, I guess, on, and that one should be the official record. That's the one I want to trust.
It is, that is, the one we keep is the official.
And that's the one, if I submit Freedom of Information Act to see myself right here, it should be that one. That's the only one.
It depends on what you requested. If you requested Mr. Gutwah's copy of his, then you'll get his. And that's the difference, depending on what you request.
So I can do that.
Yeah.
I can request one of those, and without knowing if it's altered, if it's changed.
Probably, we don't know either. That's what we have to rely upon, the council members or the employees doing it.
But we have to certainly have trust, and I would, that the city's version is not being altered.
We don't alter any of our records like that.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you, Paul, appreciate you. Anybody else got anything to say? Okay, we're going to go into executive section right now. I'm sorry, go ahead, Thomas.
The city attorney, I know we moved from item A, and then we went to item B, and I have just a general kind of observation based on what conspired to item A. Based on what I saw here in the last meeting, I, basically, we were having some issues whereby we had executive session, substance that was being relayed here, and I can remember the mayor was aware of the content, the extent of the content. And then, another thing is, the issue was going to address the personnel matters, city employees. Yes, of course, the information can be able to be relayed out there on social media and other sources of information. But the concern is, in terms of, I know the fire, the fire, the fire and the police are protected by the state, where you can't get the exit interview based on the Section 148.3 something of the state. So they are protected, but these other departments, you can request for exit interview. But now, here is the concern, if Keane, we are setting a precedence, because it doesn't, it might not take long before somebody might say, "I might want to get an employee, maybe the assistant city manager, whoever, from wherever they came from, and come and read it here." And the bigger implication that it causes is this, who in their right mind, in Keane, is going to give an exit interview, knowing that somebody can request that and come and read it here? Yes, we are streaming it alive, and future employees, city managers, what, what, what standard are we setting as a city? Yes, you can, you can talk about anything, but now, when something is concerning the city employees, what standard should we be able to allow? Even though it's, yeah, you can say about, you can speak about anything you want to speak, based on freedom of speech. And that's the concern, I think, that I was seeing in the last meeting, that the mayor had to face, whereby you have a substance that was... that the mayor had to face whereby you have a substance that was discussed in the executive session and then you have personnel matters here that is going to have an impact, report, you know, effect for many years to come for employees who currently work for Keene and the employees that will want to come to work for Keene in future, probably. So that's the concern that I think that we found ourselves, ourselves in. And that's why we tried to reach out to you and you are not available. So it's just a general observation that, that the issues that you are running again is versus trying to stop somebody from speaking or the public.
Well, the, the main point I want to make is, is that once, you just can't demand it. For example, the information about the city secretary's exit interview. Of course, if you look at the personnel matter exception, none of that fits. It's employment evaluation, discipline of employees. She's no longer an employee, she's resigned. So none of those would fit to even have in an executive session. And so basically, and remember, when Tabitha left, we'd already had the open records request. We actually asked her, do you want to seek an AG opinion to withhold it? She said, no. So at the end of the day, if, if employees don't care, then the information is out there. So there's no way we can stop it. You can't stop it being discussed in a meeting. That is the citizen's right. And of course, because we are a limited public forum, we can't stop it even though the information may not be something we want to hear or want, you know, don't like the message. At the end of the day, we can't discriminate based upon the viewpoint of the messenger. And so that's really, I think, the critical part that I want to get across. It's not that it's something you, you probably won't, I mean, to be honest with you, I, I can't remember in twenty-five years, that's the first exit interview I've ever had read in an open meeting, ever, in twenty-five years. And it's thousands of employees. So it's rare. But at the end of the day, I guess the point made was the criticism of the mayor. And at the end of the day, everybody up here is subject to criticism by the public. Whether you agree with it or not, I'm not saying that's the case. I'm just saying, we cannot prevent citizens from saying things like that.
Okay, my second.
You got something, Thomas?
Yes, on section.
Before we go on, just for clarification, would you say that again about personnel didn't have to be discussed in executive? Is that because she left already? Was that?
Yes, I mean, well, if you look at what the personnel exception is, which is the employment, evaluation, discipline of an employee you have in an executive session. Really, what you're talking about is, is confidential information in our personnel file. And of course, really, remember, under Texas law, personnel file is subject to open records. Everything is presumptively open to the public unless it's confidential for a reason. So you have HIPAA, anything, your health, your social security. So if, if somebody asks for a personnel file of Brent Butler, literally, we're gonna turn over his entire file except a few things that he's allowed by law to not have turned over. Information about his family, his phone numbers, social security numbers, they're basic things. Everything else is in there is subject to public view. A lot of people think it's a personnel file, therefore it's confidential. That is not correct. You're in a public entity. Everything is presumptively open to the public. You have to show a reason. I draft a lot of Attorney General opinions requests for this city. Primarily, a lot for the police department because we get, the main thing is, as soon as we get a case filed, everybody wants to get the case filed. We hadn't even investigated the case yet. So we seek an AG opinion to say it's an ongoing police matter. But personnel issues are a different matter. And once you've left the employee, none of those personnel matter exceptions are gonna fit in how you're dealing with Public Records Act issues. But again, nearly everything in a personnel file is subject to disclosure.
So is that anybody could ask for that, councilman, anybody?
Anybody. Councilmen have a special right of access to city records because they are part of the organization. If it's for public purposes. If it's some vendetta to ruin an employee, then it's the job of staff to figure that out and prevent you from getting it. But it's difficult. So at the end of the day, we're all on the same team. So y'all are entitled to get information on personnel that sometimes the citizens wouldn't want. But at the end of the day, yes, you're all entitled to do open record requests just like anybody else is.
Appreciate it. Ms. Gill, you got something you want to talk about?
Counsel, I just wanted to ask you, attorney, that we lose so many good employees. And that Open Record Act there on Tabitha was just a, kind of like the little, little piece of it. There's so many of our people who have left here because of hostility. Our mayor was on council and we lost city secretaries. I think there was like five that we lost. And then there's other employees that same thing. Is it fair that, that they can do that and keep running good people off and there's no way to stop it? There's no way to, I mean, can they not be reprimanded some way too for the things that they're doing that's costing the city money? Because you get good, hardworking people that come in here and do a really, really good job, which Tabitha did. And, and she's gone. She went somewhere else. And she loved it here. She liked the people. She did a good job. And yet she was run off. And so how, how, as, as a citizen, and I see the people just going through here. I mean, it, the turnover is horrendous and, and I, I just can't believe how much of it happens. And, and I have an employee that her sister-in-law was one of our city secretaries. And her opinion of our mayor and what she did to her in executive session was not right. And, and I'm just saying, there's so many things that, that are, are. The employee should be able to say something to someone and let them know what's happening here in our city. But we don't need to publicize it. We don't need to put it on Fox News. We don't need to put it on Facebook. We don't need to do that. But they need to have someone or a chain of command or something that they can go to privately and do that without having to be brought up in front of that person in an executive council meeting, which this lady was. And, and so I'm just saying, can you kind of clarify for us how something like that can be taken care of?
Well, of course, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with any of what you've said. I don't know anything why, Tabitha left. But at the end of the day, all these people are elected up here. That's, that's their accountability. You elect them, they serve. Whether you agree with them or not, that's, that's your prerogative. You get to unelect them if you don't want them in there. So at the end of the day, all these people have been elected by the citizens of Keene to serve on this council. So, I mean, there'll be employees that come and go, that some are great employees and you lose them, you, you hate it, and some are not as good. And at the end of the day, I mean, I think it's probably true to say cities go through a lot of turnover anyway because of the fact is, they don't pay quite as much as the private sector does. So there's a lot of that. So I'm not, I'm not gonna.
Well, I understand, I'm sorry. I understand that and we do have a good city council. And, and I, I really respect every one of them and they do make really good decisions and stuff. But sometimes you feel like your hands are tied because there's things going on that you can't stop. You can't do anything about it. No matter what you do, you can't do anything about it. And, and that's one of my frustrations. I have a business here, I have employees. And, and yes, I have employees that you're glad to get rid of, you know? But they want to walk, let them walk. I mean, pay them, hey, I'll buy you a plane ticket. But there's a difference in that, in someone being harassed so much that even it affects their family life and stuff like that. And if you meet some of these people that have left here before and see what's gone on, it, it will make a difference to, to anybody, our council, whoever. But I think sometimes the council doesn't know everything that's going on. But they should and hopefully one day they will be able to. But I think everybody needs a little bit more, a feeling that something can eventually be done to where it just doesn't keep happening.
I understand.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Thank you. You've got something, Jenna?
Just a quick question regarding Tabitha's exit interview. Dan posted it almost immediately on multiple social media sites. And he is not, he's just public. What violations will be enforced and what are the fines for that, for what he did? And also, is, is there anything us, the public, can do about the camera when we all are in executive sessions? Does it have to continue running? Because when we would stream, we would shut ours off out of respect to everybody in the room. Trust me, there's always cheap one and cheap number two in this room. If anything actually is illegal happening or outrageous, it's enforced. So I'm just wondering what our rights as citizens, since it was never announced that it was. I mean, what, because I'm afraid, I mean, if we sit here and pick our noses, I'm gonna be on camera with a bottle noise or so. Hey, anything goes. I mean, I'm just saying, because there's plenty of people here that obviously are.
This is a public forum, so at the end of the day, there's no expectation of privacy per se in here. If you're in here talking, it's, at the end of the day, it's potentially gonna be recorded. Like I said, the city doesn't do it by itself, other than our meetings, I guess, do they go? When we're even in executive, we continue to record, so.
No.
That's the typical, they stop. But there's no law that prevents Mr. Guetwa or anybody else from letting their camera run, so.
You want to speak, Deborah? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I had something I wanted to say about item B. And that's to address Mr. Paul Knott regarding if you are to request when I'm recording some, something under official capacity. If you request a video that I have, I'll give you a raw video and edited. There's a misconception out there that somehow things are twisted and, you know. There's something called editing. You look at the news media, they have two hours segment. What you see is ten minutes clip. That's called editing. But it's not to twist the truth so that it looks the other way. If you request an, a video, I'll give you raw, not edited video. The way everything was captured, raw. Now, the discussion is, sometimes people, even though the open meeting acts gives you the access to the substance, which is the vi, the video, the, the state doesn't say it's free. There's a cost. We'll assess and see if it is two dollars, three dollars, sometimes it is free. And that's what will be relayed to you. So we just, we just want to make sure that we are, we are making everything clear to everybody that if there is a misconception, that somehow you can just request and it's free and, you know, it doesn't work that way. The, the state has a requirement whereby you go in and say, okay, is this what you need? Based on the, the information you want. If it's too much, then there's always costs attached to it. But you always get the raw data that was captured at that time, not edited. So I don't know if that's clear, sir.
One thing I do want to make clear on that, that topic that you raised then, is that what I would request any time, any of your, any time you get notified by the city secretary or the records custodian that there's been a records request for information in your possession, then you need to immediately get on the stick and get it to the city secretary. Here's one. And then you, if you're at any cost, for example, if you had to put it on a flash drive or something like that, you give that to them along with the receipt. But beyond that, just get them, like get the recording device to the city and they can download it. That way you don't have to spend any time doing it and they can give it back to you. Because at the end of the day, the city of Keene is responsible to respond. You're part of their team. But at the end of the day, this, the records custodian is the one tasked with having to respond. And ultimately, she does not want to be in a, he or she doesn't want to be in the position of having to criticize a city councilman for not getting the information to him. I think one of the requests that I had tonight was, is that a crime to be late in getting records? The answer is no. If you alter the records or refuse to turn them over, then you're talking about very serious crimes. So that's why it's very imperative that when there's a request done. Plus, we have ten days, once we receive a request, to seek an Attorney General's opinion, to seek confidentiality. So that's very important to get the information in the records custodian's hands, working with you. So example, if it's got stuff in there that you claim is confidential, we need to figure out how we can seek an AG opinion. If we wait too long, we cannot. And so that's important that we, that we have that cohesion. It seems like this last time, we did not have that cohesion. We need to really look hard at our processes and then say, again, I advocate, as soon as you get a records request, it's the same way we do it in PD or anywhere else. I get, Kepel usually notifies me and says, we got an open records request. And I say, get all the information to me as soon as you can. That's what she does. She gets it all together, gets it over to me. That gives us an opportunity then to seek an AG opinion, which we have to send off all the records responsive to the AG, citing why they are confidential. So it's very important, the timely, the timeliness of the response is critical. Again, this is a new law, but at the end of the day, if you don't turn over information, it can potentially have criminal consequences. So I don't ever want anybody, city councilman, face that. So remember that, if it's related to city business, get it turned over to the records custodian, let us do our thing. It doesn't mean we have to turn it over. We have to look and see if it's subject to the act. But again, remember, everything's presumptively subject to disclosure. So it takes time.
So I have a question.
Thank you.
To your knowledge, do we have open records requests now that haven't been filled?
Yes, we do.
By whom? For whom?
I do not have a list with, I know we have several pending. Nathan got as many done as he could, but that two weeks went by pretty quick.
Do we have old requests?
Yes, there are some.
How old?
I don't know.
Thank you.
You got one more thing to say yet?
Is it ten days, like total ten days or ten, within ten business days?
It's ten business days to seek an AG opinion. Our duty is.
Because if I requested it on twelve eight twenty, twenty-three, when would I, should, when should I have the two requests that I still have not yet to receive?
Well, remember, there's two different obligations. We basically are supposed to get it to you as soon as reasonably possible. There's no ten-day deadline to get you information. It's as soon as reasonably possible. Now, if we're gonna seek an AG opinion, you have to seek it within ten business days of the date of your request. So I have not sought an AG opinion request on your requests. I haven't seen your requests, so I don't know where it is.
That's why I wanted clarification, because on the email that I received from the city, it says within ten business days. So I just wanted to clarify for that.
Yeah, that's, that's usually kind of the default period, but, you know, sometimes.
Normally, I get them timely, but these last two have been last minute and they're probably really the easiest ones to receive. So I just wanted clarification, just because I like to stay by the law. And on Dan Roberts posting Tabitha's exit interview, were there any violations and fines placed on that for him doing that, like he did?
No, it's public information.
Even though he got receipt of like the next?
I haven't seen his.
Because the way he did it was not good on Tabitha at all. Peace out, Tabitha. She's a good lady, a really good lady, really great secretary, very professional. That was a heartbreaking one for many of us locals to see go.
Well, I, I agree with you.
I mean, bar none.
So I do have a, oh, yeah.
You got something to say, Paul?
Pending request. Nineteen pending open records request.
And in that information, do we know how old is the oldest?
Looks like dating back March seventeenth on some, but that may not be.
She may, I think, Mr. City Manager, one of the things that she talked to me before she left is anytime I've sought an AG opinion request, she said that's pending. It's not pending. We've done our thing and waiting on the AG. It usually takes about fifty to sixty days to hear back from the AG whether or not. So those, probably some of those, if you want to forward me that list, I could probably look and eliminate some of them.
Okay.
But I have not seen, like Ms. Baggett's, I've not seen that. But I have not seen, like Ms. Baggett's, I've not seen that. We just responded to two of them this week that were long, there were subpoenas or deposition upon written questions, weren't really open, but they were categorized as that by staff.
Yeah, so that would be several of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Most of them seem pretty up to date as of December.
Yeah, because like I said, I know Tabitha worked hard before she left to get them as many as she could in place, so. And she always communicated with me, so I don't think we're that far back. Some of those are just pending ones that we file with the AG.
Yes. Can I get, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We have our camera in here to do the video. Is it still okay or is it necessary for Mr. Goodwater to review the video?
It's okay. I'm not saying, it's his decision whether it's necessary or not, I guess. It's not illegal for him to record the meeting or have a camera in here.
Come on up, Paul, please.
I hesitate to do this because I feel like my self-esteem took a little shot there. But I will say in 20 years, as editor of the Keen Star, reporter, photographer, in all the Freedom of Information Act requests that I made from Austin to Burleson to Cleburne, every time that government entity had a list of the costs. So I knew in advance what I was, the costs that I was going to have to incur for the request I was making. This is back in the old days, so many times it would be a hard copy, it would be paper or it'd be the old disc, you know, that's how I would receive it. But there was always a price list for that, so I knew what I was going to have to pay. And there was a suggested timetable when the information would be provided to me.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. So we do follow the state on that, the state rate.
Anybody else have anything to say? All right, we're going to go in at 6:06 and at 7:11. We'll be back once it's done. Let's read the... Is that right?
No, we're supposed to read each item.
The eight forty seven?
Yes, the following executive session there will be no action taken by the council.
Anybody got any?
Now, item ten, um, council, um, it's my understanding you'd like for the, uh, city attorney and the city manager to put together a, uh, rules of procedure for the city council, and so if you want to make that motion, we can, we can do that.
I'll make that motion, ask for the rules for the council and the ethics, please.
I'll second it.
Uh, we're discussing, uh, anybody having anything else to say? Okay, I guess, uh, Journey?
All favor.
All favor. Three, uh...
Any opposed?
Okay, end of Journey, three to one. Journey? Carrie?
Yep.
Motion's Carrie.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, anybody got any, they want to put on a journey for next week, or...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All favor. C four. Uh...